We can that one's yeah.
Oh. Couple days before at least after you know Thursday morning.
I love that.
Exactly.
This is what's.
Doing it.
This is just.
For the Glenpool City Council.
I couldn't hear you.
County Football Mayor and we do. Of trying to work and standing for a place.
Thank you that you are guiding now as they lead our city. It's his name. Amen.
Salute. David, was there anything additional?
Yes, just a couple of quick heads up for the council on two items. One will begin for that position here this month. Works out with those but with the applicants that we are. The chamber of the city will be putting in a so we're excited about that. But yes, though it's we've got Chad and Leanne looking forward to getting this out there.
Are there any questions of David?
Yes, sir. One of the things that we talked about a few months ago. We are working our way through. So we have to go through the ends on that stretch. And we appreciate what Gerald and his team are working to council consideration area of that and maintenance of all of those. He's been out there looking at those structures to time to move the annexation forward between like seven to five minutes. But they haven't. But it's possible. Responsible for what pieces of it. Thank you thankful that we're not made.
Before that area all grew up would be would be make school.
So while 151st Street, ODOT has traditionally not been willing to extend schools on. We have requested it and they have told us to include these other pieces. If you receive, we'll be ready where you for you and for our coordination.
Any other Chinese question?
Do we have like.
And with the seasonal changes that we've seen in the past.
Okay.
As use tax to the city instead of sales tax. So there but so and those are what we've attributed our. Some agree with each other. And so there is a specific sales tax. There is a specific sales tax database that they are required to see how do we address that. Database that they are required to see how do we address that in the long term and with other groups in the long term. And with other groups, there's another third party.
Because if my understanding paid that sales tax to paid that sales tax to our house. So if it's that from our house. So if it's that from report that like Walmart know if that's the way. Report that like Walmart know if that's the way.
Look for that to see whether it shows up or not. Mission to look for that to see whether it shows up or not. Mission that the state is monitor that what's called a nexus. The state is monitor that what's called a nexus in the state under the law. This in the state under the law. They are supposed to remit. A lot of nuance that goes into the law. They are supposed to remit. A lot of nuance that goes into the law. Audit a local business. Audit a local business.
Oklahoma going to know what's taxes.
Every customer's order across. Every customer's order across the nation to stick inside the city limits of Glenpool. Across the nation to stick inside the city limits of Glenpool. Right? So we those things. Right? So we those things are pieces that work in single business in the US. Are pieces that work in single business in the US. Particularly with many online and also pay us. Particularly with many online and also pay use tax instead. Excuse me. Use tax instead. Excuse me.
I had read something in. I had read something in data truth of our school system and data truth of our school system. We have a graduation rate of not we have a graduation rate of not graduates. Our employer to other areas graduates are empowered to other areas that I said I think whole school system is doing. That I said I think whole school system is doing such a great job. And that's something such a great job. And that's something difference when people get ready to boo pee that is difference. When people get ready to boo pee that is really so when you see some of this really so when you see some of this fantastic that we've got those kind of numbers.
Thirty credit.
Fantastic that we've got those kind of numbers.
Thirty credit.
Yes.
Credit area.
Off the board.
That was your forty credit area.
Off the board. I didn't realize in comments. Do we have any please? I didn't realize in comments. Do we have any please? Any council comments and we'll move any council comments and we'll move right on into our. Right on into our. Is there any one of the five items that is there any one of the five items that. And do we have a motion second please? We have a motion second please.
I'll say.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Say.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council amendment, a proposed zoning council amendment, a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment. Gening ordinance text amendment, gening regulations, sedential uses by zoning relations. Sedential uses by zoning district and applicant is the city of Glenpool district and applicant is the city of Glenpool. That the item be removed with.
Remove from the agenda.
That the item be removed with.
Remove from the agenda. Move forward.
Do not need to have.
Move forward.
Do not need to have. Has been removed and item standing with you has been removed and item standing with United States Marshal Service. I mean, United States Marshal Service. I may ask.
David, no, there. Counsel, this. David, no, there. Counsel, this agreement would be a part donate. Agreement would be a part donate for lack of words. Purchase that is the city for lack of words. Purchase that is the city with cost felony warrant that we may have that. felony warrant that we may have that does automatically comes in and helps us locate those people. Any kind of lawsuits or anything else comes in and helps us locate those people. Any kind of lawsuits or anything else from us. That's our contribution. It does not cost us overtime or anything like that. It doesn't cost us overtime or anything like that. That's pretty.
Kids' councils.
Does does.
That's for kids' councils.
Does does. Members and. Lack of better term? Members and. Lack of better term? At this point in time, yes, it can. At this point in time, yes, it can. If it doesn't meet that threshold to the fed side. If it doesn't meet that threshold to the fed side, no, it's still gonna stay on the tribal side. Side, no, it's still gonna stay on the tribal side. Investigation tool basically also investigation tool basically legal reason to look at it and I can start track. Legal reason to look at it and I can start track for criminal. Your low for criminal path for lack of words. Your low grade system clears law for TLO ten grade system clears law for TLO ten thousand.
No worry, no action. No worry, no action on that. So okay. On that. So okay. Um, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll say again.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll say again. Yes.
Counsel Fox.
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Fox.
Yes. Brrr.
Um, between the uh between the Oklahoma Department of Commerce and the Development Manager will speak. Oklahoma Department of Commerce and the Development Manager will speak to us on that.
Department of Commerce.
To us on that.
Department of Commerce. That's if it be property security, if I grant that's if it be property security, if I grant. Uh, what uh for local bit uh what uh for local business or submit a property that we have business or submit a property that we have. Submitted the serial submitted the serial. We were able to send in the application that hey, this is an example. We were able to send in the application that hey, this is an example of the type of. Uh, I would like to see of the type of uh I would like to see some drone footage of commerce. Some drone footage of Commerce Department as well. We inverse Department as well. We inverse. So this is another opportunity for really for the register.
That's a ten thousand dollars total.
Well, actually, uh, for the red roof, river dollars and then for the red roof, river dollars and then they would they would. And they would they would.
Okay, they're already twelve thousand. So. So, um, questions. So, um, questions.
You were looking at the actual contract monthly reimbursed. Looking at the actual contract monthly reimbursement to the city. They would like to pay that firstment to the city. They would like to pay that as an entire reimburse us at five thousand. So and then as an entire reimburse us at five thousand. So the motion be to accept the amendment be done. Motion be to accept the amendment be done assuming.
Yes.
That's one question.
Assuming, um.
Yes.
That's one question. Hearing none. Hearing none.
That was sent to us.
Call Rob.
That was sent to us.
Call Rob.
Counsel, Counsel Buchanan.
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Buchanan.
Yes.
Action to recommend to the open sidewalk and give JP one, seven, two, B, three thousand, six hundred.
City engineer is going to speak to us. Us and dedicate this Elwood.
The engineer is going to speak to us.
Us and dedicate this Elwood Superior of as well as a hundred and forty. Would say is administered by ODOT, but there are award this contract. So we have idea making decision. Uh, one forty first from Elwood Superior on South County Recreational Center and to Elwood. The total five thousand, seven hundred and forty four thousand, nine hundred and he has grant funding for this project dollars making a total project four thousand, seven hundred. This staff report was written with financial responsibility and that number comes up about ninety eight thousand more than what making a recommendation or rather the funding gap. Since also keep it possible for add alternate three, which is the one hundred grand. Actually, there is so there is that option for um pay them.
That what we get estimated.
To. So that would be five hundred and twenty one.
Beyond the grant total.
Was four hundred and.
Now, our match that will be original number and then they after actual number will be five twenty one internally is that's a big number to swallow. To be.
Two.
No.
Four twenty three.
No.
Ninety eight.
Then well.
Only ninety eight five.
Well, no.
I'm the name of the staffer.
But it.
Oh. That's good.
Correct. That's.
Okay.
Question dropping at alternate three, which is a lot of students walk. That's three point three million reserve budget that we have in place issue in front of the council.
For construction.
For construction.
Um, sometime mid January can probably and and yeah, the calendar year. ODOT because this.
The mapping of what do you.
Elwood Avenue, um, the one hundred and forty sixth. So that is not included in this bid packet.
Originally, we're going up Warrior Road to one forty one and then one forty one.
Was originally there.
So orig- original pathway, basically, if you want to call it that asphalt along one four one all the way to South County. We were able to back in and modify to add then Elwood along one forty one. We don't want to build it because we're going to try and widen and then tear it out to the end of the day. And so Elwood.
There we have people that live on that street that walk that.
At times have people on the inside of the bar ditches of this as we walk through. But as I said, we have about three mil, but that is a significant chunk of that.
To get those sidewalks fixed with this.
That's a good question. Um, January.
January thirty first.
January these grants will depend on ODOT. We pay that before we get that money.
From the. That correct.
Sorry.
We're gambling giving it.
I should also say that they. Project. It's been designed already. Grant application.
On the scoring.
So we're looking at and then another year.
The alternate three, five hundred.
The bid summary. The bid summary.
I understand. Significantly more down. In today's money.
The hundred thousand. Um, I have it somewhere in the.
If you're losing two hundred thousand roughly, one hundred thousand. So we losing.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a cost of seven hundred dollars out at alternate three as a city would pay now.
So a couple of a couple of things, um, and grants in the future. Take out the five hundred thousand. ODOT's construction has a construction inspection fee that's.
Property.
Or.
Seven.
Seven was total.
Match city matching.
With the grant, there was a match. Two million fifty one thousand in federal funding dollars. That's what we paid. Project is two million fifty one thousand. And that is what has that is what.
Recent cost of didn't. So in other words, saying that's kind of what you were asking.
Now, because the pro- total project cost.
The other thing that's responsibility as well. Not know for certain how much of any go into the federal funding.
Like with for change.
For change. If our match money for that portion, we would leave a portion of the grant fund.
And uh to get us that money and we get it and it to be able to incorporate cost D per foot on our.
If you remember the Elwood uh project that's currently there's multiple opportunities to contend. There are other opportunities that will continue process. We go ahead and tackle it. Prices are coming down.
There is no connector from and the design of.
We could tie in that portion processes and whether they would accept it. But we can certainly make that argument.
We've got three different options. Agenda and if that doesn't fail, then we.
I think there's multiple options here to get that. Um, grant at this point, ODOT's um Elwood will be will slow.
You said there's a budget. We did. So uh this.
By that remark, thank you for that. It's as of today. Now, we're um separate from our separate piece of point three.
Okay, fair enough. Was that factored into the open at all?
Yes, it's in our capital ODOT. They bill us when they start us.
So the additional five twenty one.
What what did we already pay?
Those when we received the invoice right away and once counted.
If if we.
Does that have.
A quarter. It could be an additional five hundred.
Because it would be it would. Question that I.
You would need to come back.
Yeah, the decision that's made. Yeah, regardless of or even the fourth piece because that's not here. We're invoices this, which won't happen immediately, our January meeting. Um, knowing that a budget amendment. So that's the concern in this. Certain that we can legally propose to pull them out in the agenda of the open meeting laws. So. But um legal is saying no. But if the council would be that we find a time and call a special meeting, move it forward with their agenda process.
But please.
Just we take no action on it. I can rewrite. Now, if we're going to say if the reality is we want to do, um, I guess it's less than the full amount. That was my problem.
If we remove.
At the ex engineer's estimate, um, if you mind.
They were excavating half the lowest gear.
Change for just that item.
To to uh what is the five hundred and twenty one number? The amount barring any at alternate three and there's a potential for a refund.
Change who the bid's gonna go to.
Okay.
So if we remove out three, um, you know, numbers because there is this David project. So they inspected the project. Then the amount that's in here and most likely.
After the staff report was written, uh, that number comes to one million, nine hundred and thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars, eight to nine cents to the city. Eight hundred and eight dollars.
It's a complicated process. Laws are written. I mean, it's not ODOT. It's a little convoluted sometimes as to how it um you can't hold bits. So um we're fine with moving forward as you call a special meeting to do that if that's the questions that they want us to answer.
So.
They did that. They'll come. It's lower or higher.
Cause of construction will be borne by.
By that. Um, if we go back towards the grant first, correct?
Five twenty eight.
Right.
Then the project.
Right. That's the way I've understood it in the past is if there are federal grant dollars in the grant.
So we put up a little cushion. Personally, I can't see. Take it. I I can't see.
Is it gonna be on both sides or just one side?
By the state, basically extending that bridge, that tab grants are opening.
So that's all that you'd like to tell me further questions.
Okay. Hi. Any other questions, Tim? Do we want to try to fashion a motion? Is there anyone?
At three, uh, from the total project.
We have a motion. We have a second. Please call the.
Counsel Buchanan.
Discussion and possible action to approve at a cost of twelve thousand.
It's the rolling middles project and it is uh the engineer that interim solution is to detain more water in the pond. Detain a significant amount of nuisance water that we see on the street. They're proposing by these plans. Uh, there's a bid and have flood event. We there are chances that that event will overflow this water that people seeing the driver. And we please.
Forward funds and we have those funds. Any please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes, Mayor Calvert. Yes, moving on to item number six, SC six and seven. Um, types of ICSC. Uh, I've been involved in those and things that I may even um help anchor with investors. So if you recall, it was very so that we can grow, make this trip to ICSC. To make them more interested in us. And uh was member of our council. And I think he would like the learning experience and learn about the process that myself and Chris wrote. Do we.
What what what? The the uh the cost for the before food, that is.
Times and and it it is a I I just just as a show of show of force for the development.
Have to make the motion and do we have a second please?
Second.
Yes.
Counsel Buchanan.
Yes.
To item number discussion and poss- item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve a change order in M. Tillison.
Up there conference center as well as abilities at those overhead doors and so and so. So um that caused this.
That is, I kept um are the reading for item seven.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Counsel Rose.
And it does pass item number eight of various marijuana visiting code. We're going to hear from Mark.
This uh we brought this item to you for rules that deal with marijuana and looking at surround and creating some of the zoning designation. Are eight licenses that can be issued. We only basically have have two of them. But a complete uh zoning code, I think we interpreted in our zoning classifications, discussion at times about. And this.
We have um earlier, do we have where you can discuss that this evening as well.
I mean, I can I can basically um they from the processing can be be finite currently with some of the codes and we also have that within our centuries. The straight retail classification. We have two. We have residential areas. And our zoning code of all throughout the city and um two uses over there. But we've looked at it as literally doing parole, the actual physical parole. What they're doing is. We've allowed those no different than somebody's sense hazardous perspective to it. Again, we have the face for us, quite frankly, a lot of state definitions, you know, cannabis products. Those uses be industrial zones for the for the and that in the sense it gives for commercial zones for J C two. Um, the group allow um definition come up with these categories and give them more of the state law. But considerations will no longer be allowed in the commercials.
They're allowed.
Them as. Plant.
Some have chosen to go different routes to marijuana and others that have say over to the industrial side. Everything except. Um, dispensaries staff level of leaving that where it's at.
Operations. Uh, yeah, those are.
Right.
I I would like to not.
Separations with the state code. Think uh again, it just can get overtly restrictive. Case in point, we've got, you know, they can transport this. But the thing that we don't have is in education, we to make. The most hazardous part that we see is and um it just makes you're using these, you know, some type of aim uh try to, you know, argue. We've been very flexible, the operations itself, wanting to do, you know, wanting to do nuisance here a little better. Well, that.
Tiny commission and council on that. So can you.
The city council. We have uh we have uh so again, our noticing requirements, uh sixty days or two months. Um, again, I don't know you exactly what to do. I think.
Hey, Chris, sir, Major St. Pioria, I think we all have mentioned with David.
Uh, any any changes that we may sell or move out. There's some.
Further state of the review can action over the review process. There they're closing.
As a new license, we come in, what we had.
Allow existing.
They decide to sell to a new owner. That's not a change of use. That's not. It's still any review. Then it's just a change of ownership. Now, if link code assuming everything passes.
I I think it was a not knowing they were issued and I don't know if it's the best of the uses is those have been the music. Uh, this still has.
The stuff that can go in and.
Not storage facility because that's that's storage facility. Happens is that it depends on the owner. It depends on.
Not all.
But uh it's very expensive to go through the technical.
And they usually try it.
Carbon filter, you know, for a little bit.
And so our our reason this evening for bringing this council is just the council ultimately um because of the conversations we've had and started down the public noticing.
Huge fan of the S U P S U P process simply because of the and the understanding to do that with an S U P or into the science that I'm capable of doing. Again, the S U P, you know, my former life base, I can uniformly identify. Function and you know, bros fire code. So it's up to to how you guys want to approach it.
So is this something.
I just want some concerns you have for. As we begin to support, but there's no actual steps.
Code. I think I was.
Discussions to new cities too, which.
But then they came back. They did.
So what I've tried to mirrors works within the context of the state law.
Expensive.
I think the answers the answers probably.
I cannot treat marijuana any differently than I treat any other business. But smells or odors emanating from businesses. Then so we want, how do we enforce that? Who's no beer? They make y'all.
Any other. It's like recess.
I was getting.
Sorry.
Thirty-three, may we have a roll call for that meeting, Lynn?
Trustee Fox, trustee Breck.
The additional add, to add to his finish, please. Right on into our consent agenda. Hearing none, can we have a second, please?
Sir?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan.
Schedule business is, uh, correctly, municipal finance services B is going to talk with us on that.
Good evening, Chair, services to conduct a Wolf and Chris Wolf typically study for the bid delta, that projected delta of funding. At that time, we went dollars, uh, wastewater treatment plant, it's a look at three very different treatment plant. Obviously, new debt, plus we have other additional operating utility costs, things like that. And other things, we would have to get those approved, um, you'll see each of them forward, and I will pull up that slideshow.
I have one question. Once that we, I want to say this, once that we allowed to, for some of that, we borrowed, and we haven't forgiven for that, some of that debt. After.
It's, we would have to work through that process.
We looked at that program before initiating the borrowing process, we did not qualify, our plan that they had, was for specific. Project, I can ask, and once it's done, because.
And.
Give you a little bit of information about us, I'd be brief, I want to be informative for you guys tonight, as a source, um, with the S E C. We have a water resource board program with the water board over the years, so, like, on the clean water, on the water resource board receives money from the federal government, and gets scored, and there's a scoring process. What you're scoring is, uh, we submit only very low per capita income, good for, full fold in those communities that you come back and you have the ability to move on. Little bit of key thing, and it's adopted, two thousand and fifteen, you adopted it, it's a little more extensive this time, but we had one year, and then nothing else was done after. The, uh, we look, you know, we looked at, here's what we did, well, what's a rate study? We look, and knowing you have a lot of moving pieces, uh, everybody's familiar with a state sixty million and change, that was tremendous, you guys know all of that? That we're having to come up with sixty to seventy, and we look at utility tail or helping cities determine how they're going to fund, or be able to, and cost of materials. Is what it takes when you have, be able to accomplish everything you need to, you're purchasing your water from Tulsa. I wanted to at least throw that out there, because it's going to be something I, I want to, I'll talk fast, hit it, you two handout, we provided two handouts, but we cut it off fifty-three pages. This model. We have these need, uh, the plant, and so they think, okay, two or three years is, and so, well, I, yeah, million here, I know you're expensive, but we want to put everything together. We, um, bugged your staff, go to the water system, what we typically want to. Is lost, uh, we have one of the coke energy with E and N, and so they're, they're a huge amount, don't have any large near actual water usage by customer class, uh, percentage. Uh, the last four years, to see at this juncture, we had not gone in as hard, very similar, and they're in a high growth area. You guys are in, we show you all this information, is that when you're looking at forty customer base, and what it takes on additional operational expenses, so, we go. Uh, you have about four year customers, and then we may have, certainly for you, you're about even. This is what I kind of started off, you know, a half years ago, what you see highlighted there at twenty-two, and then, like, I can talk for this, a larger ten thousand short customers, thousand and six twenty. And that you would have support, that are surrounding communities that are taking wastewater, where you're at right now, on what side, you're kind of middle of the road. If you look, kind of an off, not next to the road, as far as comparing yourself to other communities, it doesn't matter what everybody else is charging, you have to, communities have a greater sales tax base, and they limp bowl, and then some are even in a hundred thousand gallons. You're on the bottom end of great history, just once again, going back to fifteen, um, a decade ago, back at that time, it was six dollar per thousand now, uh. And communities that have to take on, uh, then we base. Okay, this is what we look at, it's our rate structure, and you, different parts of the cell, and then you have, uh, is a community statewide, when they look at, we have to take on to a level that, know people that come through, uh, there is on rates. It takes to fund your projects. Loan for, that would go to the water resources board, and because, because that's what you're looking at, the how do you pay back? And so, the first thing we, and you see an asset, uh, that took down, that's something that's, it looks, going to happen in twenty-five and so forth. Projects, we had two hundred, now we have a lot of capital, capital, but some, some cities, some proffits, I do the water board or whatever, we just say, all right, how much? Question is, all this, how do we know if that's, because why do we care about to have enough reserve? Do we have, as expect, they, we have to wrap around, six and a half, a little over six, everybody is familiar with, the actual annual payment of, that, should say twenty-four. And so what, we did a loan with the water board, you can't, that you did the loan, did a thirty-five million dollar loan, the funds down, then you get with the board, it's spread out over thirty years, that thirty-year period. And is because there's significant payment. We pulled, and so you're about this year, and so you say, well, we can't, we're going to just, let's call that out. Well, one of our questions, and that's what's a point nine-three percent, when I say you would probably, you could take on other projects, so we had discussions. Once again, four million, or ten million, or fifty million on collection lines, you could do other, back to the board, and then you provide them all and so forth, but as long as you, we can only handle the plant and close out their loans as soon, have a small piece. So, here within the next year, well, what are you going to do with that balance? The plant will be from that time, then what we're looking at programs, so you haven't paid one penny of interest on that. When you get through all this, or, we, we, we just get some million more for lines, or if you took full advantage, uh, but, maybe it's not going to hurt you. We'll go to the next, I think, oh, well, in the spring of twenty-seven, S R F, you have your two thousand nineteen rate, but when you see your payments, that's what your thousand dollars. And so, what you have to have, anything you get out of me tonight, is to have that, your utility system for the next twenty, then what project costs double, rates, cost, is the mental picture we want you to have, because, do you? Rates, and you have a lining right here.
Where, with a charm, what's a charm?
You're looking at that, you'd be in the mid, you'd probably be, uh, what you had, and it would be a sad picture today, if I was talking to you about sixty-some million dollars. Action needs are, and then we show what the proposed rate structure, John, why are we talking about a water rate change? Then, it doesn't mean this doesn't fit, uh, as your plant, or the loan is, about two dollars and fifty cents. Once again, we show you other communities and where they have to be on, as far as current, and then where you're going to, if you, ten thousand gallons, uh, on the water bill for far right, if we increase to this rate that you're, that's not, that's, uh, an out. Uh, you raise your base from five cents, here's what you, that you, uh, where, but there was discussion now, type of rate increase that they call a loss factor, so they may lose some of that, labor and communities. Basically, whatever's passed on, rates to include that loss factor involved, but, that's what we suggest adjustment annually. I think you guys, have you had discussions on C P M? Kind of speak through this, that would jump up to about a million, two million. More, and, or is it, they're not quite doubling your volume, they basically put you, line of credit you already have, and use, or purple, your kind of usage monthly. A little bit in this scenario to take on the additional, your customer base is forty-six, forty-seven, hundred and sixty customers, easy, you have sixty thousand, you needed ten dollar increases. Look at, well, and because you have. Just have a capital platform in charge, that thirty, yours going up so high, and they're, that, we lessen that, once again, this is everything I've talked about tonight, about, that you need to. We are now at a million seven. Higher, and then this, this shows you where you're at on the base, I mean, we, we jumped from increasing your, now, I want to show you something, because, one of you guys were ninety-eight, and then you said, well, why is that two million, one ninety? Your existing loan with O W R B, and you just want to hold the loan out there as long as you can, that you are set to take five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, you still have to pay that five hundred and eighty-three thousand, and you said, well, principal payments, you're going to stop it. You said, well, that two point one, the proposed. Twenty-five to eight-ten, and everybody's, thirty thousand dollars of your own money, that's a blip, if you were to borrow thirty thousand, is, do we have? Hundred and fifty million in projects, money, free money, and then tie that in with low interest loans. This is about, if you look at where you're at, you kind of see that you go all in the other city, just assuming behind you is getting ready to borrow more money to do, every time we make a present, this is a base charge, uh, about seven-ten, and then it's a couple of nuances. Your debt and this, uh, with utilia, uh, utility revenues to help make those pay higher, prior to two thousand and fifty, do we rely on any other funding? So, we were, sales taxes being used to make, how much sales tax can we can change? Well, I didn't come to here tonight to have a fix for you guys, it's a hundred questions, but, this is, it's just your first, so look at this. Uh, now, if you go in and start changing, we run that, uh, but we wanted to be, so, um, I'll be glad to answer any questions. We said, uh, for those years I showed you, through twenty-four, like, you were to assume a five percent growth in, in customers a year.
Second one, and I, I, obviously, I know we're talking about sewer, decrease the amount of increase in sewer, but increased water, because, it's, it's, it may be a.
On, that's why I found it equitable, and how the, those are, we can adjust the water, much we've saved you on sewer, on structures. You have, you know, have two hundred and seventy, yeah, bath and water, per thousand, and so we, we, we're agreeing, you want to. This is a lot.
Off the top of your head, but knowing that this is a lot of information, not bringing any recommendations tonight, February timing depending on the questions that we get back, what, uh, but if you come up, or the team is answering those appropriately, uh, so that we, future, um, you're ready and armed with all from those, uh, remarks.
For commercial sewer, as with the residential?
This is twenty fifteen, it's my understanding, so.
Right, doing the same as sewer.
Staff will say, hey, here's where we, but that's part of that process for us.
Team that I defended, that watering, still get the complaints that the water cost, we have to market that a little better, and, and the fact that when Tulsa does. We have not been, we haven't, as we saw in some of those.
We're getting what, looking for new problem plant, do you have any idea for lift stations?
Well, it's, um, will, current line in the ground will not allow us to reach such a, years back now, there was a study done, uh, with fifteen million dollars. So, um, we know there are needs, um, we know that those things are going to change, um, I do agree with John, I think there is some timing, cheaper rate, but we can't do that in midterm, um, plan dominantly, sewer upgrades to that side either, however, if I remember correctly, cannot, won't come into play here in this conversation.
Or a distribution of. I mean, the average, the average water user, you have them all together, it's just under about four thousand gallons of water.
That is what we've seen, what we've seen in. You've got a class of small businesses that do not serve food in any way, that are typically twenty thousand to fifty thousand.
If that's not in here, if it's away.
Yeah, I wrote that as a note, we were very conservative on group, um, stretch it out, because, I mean, we are obviously.
Point one thing out, I think this, okay, you see that, your, that area there, where it drops off?
I will.
And one thing we didn't look at, the thing about the water boards program, you could have a thousand dollars, this is a hard-fish example, ten, yeah, from our end, we don't think that's correct, and that project costs way. How's the inflation rate compare against your borrow? We had a ninety percent increase in, in their, municipality, you have to really look at that, there's like two point seven million dollars, we're looking for that year, or we just pay, anyway, I just do that out there, but, that's something else to look at, for residential.
Across.
Oh, wait.
Any? I skipped to where we need to be, Josh, it was important for us tonight.
I do, I appreciate. Two, I believe, discussion, possible action, zero-one-nine, R-one, with us on that.
Yes, I'm sorry, just, my, my extension of our current agreement, before E P S, they take care of it before T G M, water towers, to lift stations, to E M S, to this, making sure that everything looks good, supporting cause of this, making it screen. It's two times a year, uh, you can see on the thing here, and then a load, load, full load, electrical load, performance line, or we went out for bids to find different kind of this kind of E P S, in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty.
Any questions of, of Jesse, councilors?
I'm assuming since you are.
No, bring it out, any other questions, councilors?
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Brose?
And it does pass, moving on to item number three, discussion and possible improvements project, David, our city.
Nicely. Five hundred and forty-nine dollars to, uh, November, twenty, questions, man?
Million two hundred and eighty-two thousand. Hearing none, I would make the motion, have a second, would you please call the robe?
Trustee Brose?
Yes.
It does pass, moving on to, with allowance authorizations, number fourteen and number.
All protocols duly observed, allowance authorizations, uh, initially allowed to have a life safety device, um, this change amounts to eleven number fifteen, uh, in the process, I was unsure, and came, uh, amounts to a hundred and seventy-one thousand.
It's got to do with the soil?
Yes, pick up this unsuitable material, um, but, uh, but unexcavated, that, that was like a, a berry side, a layer, the foundation was just poor material, uh, in a twelve feet.
Already a foundation that's been there for years.
This is a foundation.
Why is not, I thought you were, I was like that, yeah, I thought you were.
Foundation material, the nature.
Is that twelve inches, as you, yeah, so I was looking at the, I went back.
Yeah, twelve, sorry, twelve feet.
So we don't have any, yeah, just.
Fill in a whole bunch of materials.
That's what, that's what Google.
I cannot, it, it does appear that, um, this was an area that we, over time, it's gotten, patches that happen sometimes, or, you know, holes in multiple places, and test holes, and.
But it does sound like it's going to be something that we're going to have to decide. So I have a second. Chair Calvert? You have, is this eight forty-two P M, would you please?
Trustee Fox?
Uh, do, are there any trustee comments, consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion on them? Would you please call the
Trustee Buchanan?
It does pass, moving on.
Sorry, let me, it was not meant to be, uh, somehow when we printed out
Moving on to item two, discussion of possible action to approve modifier to seventy thousand, four hundred and seven thirty. From reserves to capital improvements, that's and Leanne Reed works.
Conference Center Events Manager and she's going to visit this item.
Thank you for that.
As part of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, so we are planning to replace those projectors, they call A. Those were their own set. Um, those project is really not good, cultivated. Um, and most of the time I'm options we found L D, our projectors, the screens come over those doors. And so we get ripped, um, I know multiple times we've had to The screen and the issues with those. Important when we have the four-year wall that's I would love to go with a larger option, um, but keep that just move right inside those door frames. It's important, sixty-three dollars for from our reserves fund, reserve has two options. There is a smaller one to fit speakers, which is very wide, or is very long. So we have to keep the same size that we have, um, replacement and the total cost of seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents from reserves. Capital
I lose.
Yes. Um, my name's, uh, the length of time, so it would be a matter of, we, January, February, next year.
Thank you.
On the promotion we
It's larger size. Larger size.
Good mark.
In ten seconds.
Yes.
Ice your lens.
Yes. Forty-eight and eight, would you give us a roll call for that one, Leanne?
Chair Calvert?
Yeah, here, and we will, uh, have our E M S report. We appreciate
Seven percent response time compliance, we had fifty-three items, see before.
Official, you know, what's in the
Okay.
Chair.
Hearing none, we will go into our consent agenda, which is one of the purchase orders. Uh, is there any one none, do we have a motion on
I'll say again.
We have
Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Fox?
Your business, we are
Yeah. Bob? Tune up, sprinkle systems and water lines and think where you are. Rolling heads, local city area, so I'm basically five forty south.
Four dollars, right, one two, one seventy-five.
Okay, we're here, we're coming in next summer.